Yep.
Good evening. We'd like to welcome you to our municipal council meeting tonight. We're glad you're here. We apologize for the delay. We had a closed session meeting this afternoon that ran long. Today is February 21st. It is now 5:50 and we're meeting in the municipal council chambers. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, Provo Channel 17, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. The council requests that citizens help maintain the decorum of the meeting by turning off or silencing electronic devices, being respectful to the council and others, and refraining from applauding during the proceedings of the meeting. We'll now start with a roll call. Mr. Strachan?
Cliff Strachan.
Brian Jones.
Gary Winterton.
Kim Santiago.
Dave Connect.
Dave Sewell.
George Stewart.
Kay Van Buren.
David Harding.
John Curtis.
Wayne Parker.
Thank you. I understand the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance will be offered by Wes Moyes of Troop 782.
Heavenly Father, thank you for what we do today. This are city leaders and our city. Please let them make the right, the best decision for our city. In the name just Christ, amen.
Amen.
Will the audience please rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's now time for the public comment portion of our meeting. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comments on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Additional time may be given to individuals specifically invited to speak, such as applicants, neighborhood chairs, or others that may be representing additional persons. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium.
Marion Monahan, with a horrible cold, don't really want to be here. Edgemont Neighborhood Chair. In the last two days since returning from a trip, I'm getting dozens of calls from neighborhoods, neighbors, who are very concerned about the Benus Kuanis Park, which is located next to the Tempe View High School. Apparently, there have been some meetings that I was not invited to or didn't attend. I don't understand why that would happen. So, I am very concerned. I think we need a formal neighborhood meeting with all the parties and get it written up so that everybody can see it. That's the way the neighborhoods are set up. And so, I'm hoping that that's the way we're going to go with this, rather than just everybody saying, "Oh, the neighbors are all happy with it." Well, they're not. So, please consider this very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I give you a piece of paper? A letter from the neighbors. You should have received it already in your email. My name is LaDonne Robbins Christianson, and I live adjacent to the Benus Park in Provo. I watched the work meeting of February 21st, and the feeling was that expressed in that meeting was that neighbors around the Benus Park were informed about the proceedings of the park and were not opposed, and I feel that that was a misrepresentation of the neighbors that live around the park. The meeting that occurred at the district was not made public, and only four neighbors were invited. We have not had any public meetings that have been noticed. Superintendent Riddle, also, Retell, also stated that our, later stated, "Our agreements made in this meeting could not be committed to in writing." So, that has been a concern for us. I just have a couple of questions. Does a committee, does a community have a say in a decision if a city park that they utilize will be sold? As a community, we feel like we're being left out of this discussion. The softball field that is required for Title IX can fit on the property that the school owns, as shown by the school district. I know that it was shown in that February 21st meeting. Is there still a need for the sale if Title IX is fulfilled by that, with that requirement fulfilled for Title IX? If not, can some covenants or restrictions be in place to accommodate the neighborhood? Possible questions would be access to the fields by the neighborhood, what times can the neighborhoods access the field, possibility of construction happening in the future in those fields, removal of playground equipment. The Benus family feels a little betrayed because they donated a lot of the property for this park, and it will not be used for their intended purposes. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
I'm Marlon Christianson, also in the, from the Edgemont Neighborhood. And it's interesting that just, we could have filled this room with people that have a strong opinion regarding this, this action, and mostly unanimously opposed. And so, but more than anything else, I think, just because of the surprise in the process. And, and so, I think that's one of the things that was my concern, that when our elected leaders take an action like this, that could significantly affect our neighborhoods, that the people have a say in that, in that process. And so, and I think there are numerous compromises. A number have been brought up in recent weeks, but there's not been a forum for settling that. And so, so my perspective on this is that we would hope that that would be taken under advisement, and that, and as our elected leaders, that you would look at that more closely. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Alan Lemon, also a resident of Provo, also concerned about the Tempe Benus Park. Don't know that I'm necessarily for or against any sort of ultimate decision, but have had similar feelings just in terms of the process. And feeling, I don't know what all the intents and purposes are, but thus far, I have not felt like it's been as open as I would like. And feeling like things are, anyway, I just feel like I'm too much left in the dark of it, even with my different neighbors trying to keep me informed. So, I'm just hoping for a more open process and better, better communication so that we can know better what all's occurring and the direction decisions are being made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jay Goodloff. I live in the Edgemont Neighborhood as well. I appreciate the time that you've given to speak and to hear me. I also stand here to express my concern about the process through which the consideration of selling, selling the Tempe Kuanis Benus Park from the city to the school district. I'm concerned about the openness of the process and the way that that process has thus far been represented. It appears that the council's under the impression that the neighborhood is behind any, the direction that it is going right now. I have been in attendance at both of the meetings. I attended the first meeting at Christine Platt's house, which was an informal meeting. The mayor was in attendance. Councilmember Winterton was there. And I don't think that that could be represented in any way that the neighborhood was supportive of such a change. I was also at the meeting with Mayor Curtis and Superintendent Retell, and at that, where it was just a few people, and multiple concerns were raised at that meeting. And I don't understand how that could be represented again, that the neighborhood was behind it, nor could it be said that the neighborhood is behind it after four people from the neighborhood attended that meeting. We tried to follow what the superintendent wanted and the Provo in terms of starting a discussion, but we need a much greater discussion in order for the city council or the city to take this kind of step. Now, on the practical side, I don't know that the city has an excess number of parks. When I saw the Provo, you just recently had a meeting with the Provo Rec Center, and in terms of the parks that you're trying to develop, the city's own survey showed that we need more parks in the city, both regional and neighborhood parks. The city in general should not be in the business of selling neighborhood parks to the school district when other opportunities and other compromises, other solutions are available to accommodate what the school district needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Calvin Judd, and I live in Provo. I would like to know what Provo City is doing about the increase of homeless population. Which branch of our local government is responsible for this issue? Who I can talk to about this issue? And how can young people help? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephen Nordstrom, and I'm from Provo, up in Edgemont. But I'm not talking about the park, although I would definitely support keeping the park there. I'm here to talk about, once again, a reminder about the issue of homelessness and poverty in our area. This time, another story, the one I didn't get to last time. And this, two weeks ago, a family came to our church looking for any kind of assistance that we could give. They have a 26-year-old autistic daughter. They live in motels, and they travel from place to place on buses and trains as they can. They tried to get low-income housing where his wife was from, in Minnesota, but their municipality was too small to support such facilities for them there. They had made their way through many, many states through the winter months and such, and he panhandled during the day for, for any money he could find. Now, we see a lot of people come through the church. And sometimes you can tell that they're high on drugs, and they're just looking for their next hit. This is not the case, but there is lack of sufficient emergency shelter facilities for individuals and especially for families. There is one resource in the state, a 300-bed facility in Midvale. And we all know all of the goings-on about the replacement of the shelter facility up in Salt Lake, where they're reducing the number of beds. When will Utah County and Provo City, the center of this county, start getting serious about its homeless among us, our people? Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Jones, Provo, Edgemont Neighborhood. I'm a vice chair. As all of you on the dais are fully aware, I am very involved in city affairs. And I usually know what's going on, but I found out about this thing with the park next to the school about half an hour ago. And I got to tell you, I'm not happy about that. I don't know how much I've heard in that time is rumor and how much is true. But I'm just going to categorically say I don't like the idea of the school district taking away one of our neighborhood parks.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Chapman. I live in the Edgemont Neighborhood. I am very concerned with you asking us to be courteous and straightforward with you here when you're not willing to do that with us as Provo residents. It seems to me that everything's been done under the table so far on this. And I think you need to be courteous to all of us and give us a place at the table. We have ideas. We have abilities to help problem solve with whatever is going on. And would appreciate that. And I think that you can turn things around by giving us a seat at the table when discussions are made concerning, or decisions are made concerning the Tempe Benus Park. It is a beautiful part of our neighborhood, and many, many families use that park. And I'd hate to see it go. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sheri Mement, from the Edgemont Neighborhood. I'm also a vice chair. And I also was at the meeting with the mayor because our chair was out of town that night. And that meeting was kept small because I understood at that time that this was essentially a done deal, that this was, this trade was going to be made. If it hasn't already happened, the last meeting we were at that involved several neighbors, as many as we felt like we could fit in this living room and still keep it civil. None of those neighbors wanted to see this happen, none of them. I haven't heard anything from any neighbors that said, "Go ahead with this." So if there's, we've tried to come up with several ideas for options. We understand that the school district does need to make available the softball something for those students, but, but we feel like there are other options. Our other concern is that in that meeting, we were, I don't want to say led to believe, but, but the consensus that we came to was that, that we could put some things in writing that would leave guarantees for the use of that park for the neighbors. And have since been told that, of course, we can't bind future councils and future school boards to things, to the things that we were asking for. So with that being said, I, I think the, any support from the neighbors would be withdrawn for this action, for the Tempe Benus Park.
Thank you. Are there any comments before we move on?
This is very frustrating for me because I do believe as a council, we are waiting for that agreement also. We're looking for things. It is so hard because there are things that, and reasons that we don't know exactly right now. Some of those things are, we're still waiting for reports on, as a council. And I know that I, I will talk with people as soon as I get the appropriate information as that is able to be released. I don't believe that any decision is made. I'm not, haven't made any decision to sell that park. And so a statement that would say, "Yes, we're going to sell that park," I don't think that that's an appropriate statement because that has to go through the city council, and we haven't had a presentation on that. We don't know that that's going to happen. And so I would hope that you'll be patient, that as we get information, I will, I will be an open book. And I'll tell you the things that I can tell you. There are things that we can't talk about, that we shouldn't talk about until an appropriate time. But you will be involved in the sale of the property, as far as I'm concerned. Mayor, can you help with this, as we attended that meeting together?
It's normally not our policy to comment on the public comments, but since you've broken that, I'll go ahead.
I'm sorry, it was asked. It was invited.
I actually do think it's probably appropriate just to say a few comments. And let me, let me suggest that perhaps what we're most guilty of is some communication problems. There was a meeting scheduled several weeks ago, and the superintendent became quite ill at the time. And I don't want to delve into that too much other than to tell you that he's just now getting back to work from having missed that meeting. And literally, nothing has happened during that period of time. And these things are still very early in the stages of discussion. And to the extent that some of you have not been, felt involved, please know that wasn't intentional. The, the process has not even really begun. What we're, what we're doing in these early meetings is trying to lay the groundwork for moving some issues out of the way that would help the process, once the process began. So please feel comfortable that there is no quick process underway to make this happen without it being a thorough discussion in the neighborhood. It got put on pause for several weeks because of that illness. And other than that, we're ready to jump back into it and continue the dialogue that we had started with you before.
Mr. Winterton and Mayor, thank you. I might just add that I would be in favor of scheduling a neighborhood meeting, notifying the neighborhood chairs, and just so everyone has a chance to be involved. Thank you. All right, let's move on. I'm going to give an explanation of a new procedure that the council is using. For the information of those in the audience, the council recently adopted updated rules of procedure regarding this meeting. One of those rules is that it no longer, is no longer required to make a formal motion in order to approve agenda items if they are approved without changes. Whenever an agenda item is read into the record by rule, there's an automatic motion on the table to approve that item as currently written. This is referred to in the rules as an implied motion. Formal motions are only required in order to make changes. Otherwise, at the end of the discussion, the council will simply vote on the implied motion. Another new addition to our rules has to do with what's called a consent agenda. This is the first meeting tonight when we have employed that new option. And consent items are items that have been discussed previously and where all of the council members felt that no further discussion was required. So on those items, we will simply immediately call for a vote. However, if any, if even one council member wishes to pull the item off of the consent agenda so that there could be a discussion, there is that option. So the first item on the consent agenda is a joint resolution of the Provo City Mayor and Municipal Council appointing temporary justice court judges for the Provo City Justice Court. If there are no council members, Ms. Santiago.
I did just think of one more question I had. Early in work session, we, this came up, and I did get that question satisfied. I, I had looked online at judges.utah.gov where they have their peers, a vote of their peers, 12 of them, to say whether or not they felt like they should be retained. And they also, it also talks about them passing basic evaluation standards and has their survey respondents recommend whether or not they think they should be retained. And I, and I couldn't find Morgan Cummings on there. He, he was the only judge I couldn't see in this. And it was because he was only recently placed as a judge on September 2016. So, but I do have a question about, so that question was satisfied. I think, okay, I mean, I don't know a lot about him, but it sounds like if he was approved by the state to be moved from, was he prosecutor in Lehigh? And then moved to the seat of?
Mr. Cummings was a part-time prosecutor for Lehigh City for several years. And they recently had an opening for a justice court judge, and he was the, the one that was selected. And all justice court judges are certified by the Administrative Office of the Courts, which is a state agency that supervises our justice courts.
Thank you, I appreciate that explanation. And then also, the state statute allows for a certain number of judges that can act as, because there were three, and then there were two. I don't know if they're alternates, or can you explain how that works?
Yeah, let me explain why there's five names on there. So the, there's no limit as to the number of temporary justice court judges you can have. And just for the sake of the public, since we're talking about this, the reason for having a temporary justice court judge is that these are basically people that can fill in when our appointed judge is absent. So if he's sick, or he has a conference to go to, or he's on vacation, temporary justice court judges can handle his calendar for the day that he's gone. The reason why there are, there's two different categories on here is because the first three, Judge Fenstermaker, Judges Fenstermaker, Colomore, and Parkin were already appointed previously and have already been serving for several years, actually, as, at least in the case of Judge Fenstermaker, as temporary justice court judges for Provo City. The other two are newly, newly appointed judges. And so it was the recommendation of our justice court judge, Judge Rick Romney, that we add them to the list as well, just so that there's more options to accommodate scheduling conflicts.
And that makes sense, that their workloads are heavy and it may take more than just a few to try and fill in.
Right, well, and, you know, the, the problem is that on any given day, the likelihood that, that any given judge isn't already handling their own calendar in their own court is small. So the more that you have as backups, the better chance you have of actually being able to get someone to fill in.
All right, thank you very much.
So just as a point of order, this is the first time that we've done one of these, so we're figuring this out. But I believe that what we would intend in a case like this is to simply request that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that we can vote on the items that are on the consent agenda. So I will consider this item to have been removed at Ms. Santiago's request. Let's move on to the next item. And then the ones that are removed would be, immediately follow the consent agenda vote would be my intent. Is that the way you understood it, Mr. Jones?
It is, and I think that's appropriate. In this particular case, since this is the only item on the consent agenda for council, I recognize there's another one for the RDA Board, but you could either defer it until after the RDA Board item, or I think you could go ahead and vote on it now because you're about to switch hats, so to speak.
Well, I, I think I'd rather defer it to kind of get in that pattern that if there's a question, that we, that we pull it off and discuss it afterwards. All right, so we, we do have one remaining item on the consent agenda, and that is actually a redevelopment agency of Provo item. So we'll, I need to look for a motion to, I call for a motion to recess as the municipal council and reconvene as the redevelopment agency of Provo. Submove by Mr. Van Buren. Second by Mr. Winterton. All in favor?
We have an implied motion ratifying the redevelopment agency consent to the change of ownership interest in the Provo Town Center Mall, presented by David Walters.
So because this item has been listed as a consent agenda item, there would not be any presentation or discussion unless someone wants it removed from the consent agenda, so.
But it says that my paper is supposed to.
Yes, the notes, the notes were not up to date on that issue. So I guess, so the first question would be, is there any, is there any member of the RDA governing board that would like this item to be removed from the consent agenda?
Is there anybody that would like it removed from the consent agenda? Call for a vote, and all in favor? Thank you. I call for a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency of Provo meeting and reconvene as municipal council of Provo meeting. All in favor? I need a motion first.
Submove?
Second. All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. So now we will come back to item number three, which is open for discussion if there is any further discussion on this item. Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Harding? Any further discussion? All in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So now we are back to number five. A resolution appropriating $725,000 in the general fund to pay for the cost of asbestos abatement and demolition of the former Utah County Security Center, generally located at 1776 Buckley Lane. And this is to be presented by Tara Riddle.
Good evening. As you're very well aware, two weeks ago, the council put the old Utah County jail property back on the surplus property list. That action now allows us to continue with the real estate purchase contract that we have on the property. The purchase agreement on the property is for $1.2 million with the understanding that Provo City will have the asbestos abated and the building demolished. Those expenses would then be reimbursed through the sale of the property. As we discussed earlier today in work session, we have gone through the bid process for the asbestos abatement and the demolition of the facility. The bids for the asbestos abatement ranged from approximately $240,000 to $295,000. And the bids for the demolition ranged from $264,000 to $772,000. We're now completing the analysis and the reference checks from those bidders. And once that is completed, we are, we will prepare the bid to be awarded based on receiving the appropriation of the $725,000 to complete the work. That's all I have for this evening.
Are there any questions? Ms. Santiago?
Just for the public benefit, could you talk about the, a little bit about the history of this property and why this is a good idea to, to go this direction?
Sure.
Thank you.
So back in the mid-'90s, Utah County decided to stop using the jail for their facility. And so they were considering putting the jail up to sale to a private jail. The neighborhood had serious concerns about that. And so they actually approached the city and asked the city to consider purchasing the jail. city and asked the city to consider purchasing the jail with the intent of eventually redeveloping it into a residential project. And so we've held the property since, I think we closed on it in '97, so we've had the property in our ownership since then. For a brief time, we used the jail for offices for Atlantic Engineering that did the I-Provo Project. And then other than that, it was used for a film set and just vacant. But about five years ago, we started noticing increased vandalism, and despite our best efforts to keep the property secured, we just cannot keep people out of it. So at this point, the vandalism has resulted in all of the copper wiring being removed from the building, the plumbing's been damaged, there's really no more windows left in the property. So at this point, it's become a very attractive nuisance and a huge liability for the city. So it would be best if we go ahead and remove the property, have it come into a good, useful, taxable project through a residential use. I don't know if there's any additional questions about that.
That's great. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? If not, we'll open this item for a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this item?
My name is John Fenley. I'm a resident of Provo, and I represent Provost Makerspace. We've been trying to buy this building from the city for quite a while, and we're now currently in litigation to try to take it from you by force because you won't negotiate with us. Now, $725,000, that sounds like a lot of money, but it's really not that much, honestly. That's what we estimated it would cost us to renovate the building and make it useful. Do any of you have any idea what a usable 65,000-square-foot building is worth? There are a few for sale. One for sale in American Fork for $4.3 million. There's another for sale for $5.5 million as well. If you go down to Efrum, you can get one for $1.2 million. But I think, just economically, demolishing this building is a bad idea. It doesn't make sense to me. I think it's ridiculously stupid, honestly. I don't understand what the issue is, why you want to demolish it so bad. Now, I know the mayor's views of the damaging effect of accusations, based on the recent situation with the police chief, but I want to ask all of you, every single one of you, do you have any ulterior motives for demolishing this building, for getting rid of it? Do any of you, are you willing to swear that you don't know the developers, that you don't stand to benefit economically from this? Because it doesn't make any sense to me otherwise. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all again, Mayor. I didn't see you last time, so I'd say hi. Still not going to imagine any of you naked. It's way too much excitement for me today. So I would like to mention that I spoke with Tara Riddle... Excuse me. I spoke with Tara Riddle earlier this week, I think yesterday, and she kind of briefed me as to what she's mentioned in this meeting as well. It was... Eventually reached the point where I inquired if the neighborhood that had approached the city in the first place agreed to John's plans for the jail, would the city reconsider? And she told me no. And that's kind of the impasse that we reached. And I've tried to be open-minded and definitely sympathetic to the city's concerns regarding the property, but that impasse kind of made me a little uneasy as to what may be going on. You mentioned taxable property, and I understand the world operates on money, and a city doesn't function for free. So I understand that motivation for sure, but I would just like to, I guess, stress the impact that having a Makerspace, a place where innovation, design, progress can take place, collaboration, and the benefit that can bring to a city, the startups it can create, and the further, more taxable income that would occur... I understand I'm almost out of time. That would occur, that would be a lot more profitable for the city than just a housing development, which, compared to the tax revenue off of a company like WordPerfect, it just pales in comparison. Okay.
Could you wrap up your comment, please?
Absolutely. It was mentioned earlier, two people came and wanted to address the homelessness issue. I don't know if this was something that has been talked about, but the jail, what we were planning on doing was employing homeless and providing lodging for the employees that would be working there to, after the asbestos abatement, renovate and modernize the building. I would also like to just iterate that, from what we've looked at on the eminent domain qualifications, we do fit the qualifications, and I understand that the attorneys have told you that we don't, and we are intending to pursue this eminent domain process as far as we need to. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to the council for discussion. If there's no further discussion, we'll... Did... Okay. I just wasn't sure what was happening there.
I have a couple of written statements that they've asked to have the city reporter read in. So one of them is from Alex Campbell. He's from Orem. He states, "I am an aspiring network engineer. I have the education for the job. I just need experience to build a resume." Provost has offered to provide the experience at the old county jail, and he appreciates an environment of mutual learning and discovery that Provost provides. He supports John in his endeavor to acquire the jail. And then the second one is from Trenton Allred, again from Orem, and he states, "I support the growth of Provost. As a charity focused on enabling the creative mind and efforts of the residents of Provo and its surrounding areas, Provost qualifies for our collective efforts in providing it with means, resources, and goodwill. I encourage open dialogue with Provo City Council, and Provost. Civil collaboration with each other can create something great for all of Utah County to enjoy, greater than what could be achieved by either entity on its own." And I believe those were the only two? Those were the only two. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further comments, Mr. Harding?
If I could ask a question of Ms. Riddle again. I realize that this particular item has come before the council in a variety of forms over a few years, but I've only been on the council this past year or so, so I may have missed some of it. But did the city look into what the cost would be to refurbish the building as opposed to demolishing it?
No, because it's never been a consideration to actually keep the building intact. That wasn't a discussion with the neighborhood, and it wasn't something the city's been interested in doing.
Okay.
Any further discussion among the council or questions? If not, we have an implied motion that is on the table to approve the resolution as currently written. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to item number six. Mr. Jones, could you clarify one thing for me? Last time, we discussed the distinction between the public hearing and items that were opening for public comment, but it looks like all of the items I'm seeing say public hearing. Is that, are they all actually public hearings, or...
Oh, in your chair notes? No, the next several are... But item number eight, for example, is not a public hearing, and I don't believe it indicates in the chair notes that it is. So I think the chair notes are accurate with respect to that. It looks like it's just eight and 10 that are not.
10, okay. Thank you for that clarification. So we'll turn the time over to Mr. Bill Pepperoni for the parking ratio issue.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, we met in your study session and went through two alternatives for an ordinance amendment for parking ratios in three zones. In that study session, I mentioned that in the next couple of days, I would be meeting with some developers and discussing this issue. As a result of that, as a result of the meetings with those developers, staff decided to bring forth a third alternative for the parking ratio amendment. This third alternative is really what I expected to bring forward when the new parking coordinator came on and we took a more comprehensive look at several sections of the parking ordinance, parking regulations for the city. What this ordinance does is it allows for a reduction in the residential parking that's required to one space per unit for one-bedroom units or studio units, and 1.25 spaces per unit for two- or three-bedroom units, or the two bedrooms. If the developer, when he goes to planning commissioner, she goes to planning commission, convinces the planning commission that they have a transportation demand management program or plan that would suggest that they can reduce their trip generation on site. These items listed on the screen are some of those things that could be used to show that they're meeting that reduced demand. Now, these things come from best practices from around the country. This isn't something I thought of for the first time, but it really comes from best practices around. The very first one is very similar to what you heard Startup Crossing propose today in your work session. The first one is called a landscape reserve, and that is, the developer says, "This is how much parking I think I'm going to need. It's a reduction from what your requirement is." And the city and the developer decide, "Okay, we're going to set aside this land area, like north of Startup Crossing, the parcel north of Startup Crossing that used to belong to them. You're just going to landscape it for now. It'll be an amenity space for your residents, but if it ends up being needed for parking because you're spilling over into the neighborhood, that's going to be converted to parking." That's what a landscape reserve is. In the downtown zones, and now in the ITOD zone, there's a requirement for one bicycle parking space for every 2,000 square feet of building area, but that's all it says. How a developer supplies or provides that bicycle parking is kind of up in the air. So this allows or provides some additional language on what that could be or should be, to really get some kind of credit for that. So what I like about this is that it's not just like the current ordinance. It's not like the current ordinance where you simply get a 50% break if you're in downtown or in the ITOD. In this case, you can qualify for a break if you convince the planning commission that you've done some things to warrant that. The good thing about this, or thing I like about this, is that in no case will the parking be less than one-to-one. The way this is written, that's going to have, that would be at least a minimum. They wouldn't be able to go below that. Okay? That's all I have.
Oh, no, just thank you. This has been an interesting process. I think it's come to a good conclusion, and I appreciate the efforts of staff.
You're welcome. Mr. Harding?
I love seeing this proposal. I realized that, for various reasons, we had some issues coming to a head and something, some step needed to be taken, and I was reluctant but willing to go along with the understanding that this was just an interim step until we could get that parking coordinator. And I think with a parking manager, I think this will be tweaked, but I personally think that this is a much better interim step, a much closer step to where we ultimately want to be, rather than what we were discussing previously. So I'm thrilled to see this proposal come before us.
Thank you. Ms. Santiago?
I, too, am grateful for the work that you've put into this, and I think that we have a much better product in the end from all of the work that's gone into this. I did have a question for you on one of the items, item eight, electric vehicle charging facilities. Can you explain how that reduces the transportation demand?
No, that really is more towards emissions than transportation demands.
And was that just included in the material that you got?
Yes.
Okay. I was trying to find a nexus there, and I couldn't see it, so...
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
So why is it there?
Because I think it's valuable as we move forward, and we keep seeing more and more use of electric vehicles. I think it's just smart to plan these projects with the ability to service those, to provide for those. My feeling is that that would get a fairly minor contribution towards your reduction, but I think it would warrant some reduction.
It seems like it should be part of another bill or ordinance. I don't know why it's part of this ordinance.
Okay. If you're uncomfortable with it, we could certainly strike it.
My only thought on, sorry. My only thought on that is a lot of people that might be driving electrical cars might be more concerned with some of the other forms of transportation as far as bikes go, and it sounds like they're looking to protect the air quality, and so they might consider more bicycles. Just the type of person that would be doing that. So I can see a little bit of a nexus between that and parking.
Just in your discussion this afternoon with the Startup Crossing representatives, they mentioned a couple of things that aren't on this list, and that's why this is written in a way to say, "These are the types of things you can do, but if you have other ideas, you certainly can propose those." That's the way this has been written. They talked about reducing rents on the washer and dryer. I wouldn't have thought of that. That's a good idea. They talked about having space for motorcycle parking so motorcycles aren't taking up full parking spaces. And that's another good idea. It's those types of things a developer could propose and be considered as part of this.
Mr. Jones?
Right. This is probably duplicative or repetitive, but just to add on to that, what this ordinance does is it grants the planning commission the ability to approve a plan, which then allows the development to qualify for a reduction in parking. The planning commission could approve a plan that contains nothing in that list, but contains other things that, like Mr. Pepperoni just said, or the planning commission could approve a plan that includes only one of the things in that list. But there's no, just because something is in the list does not make it required or mean that it automatically qualifies. It's just a list of, I guess in some ways, suggestions of things that people might consider as they put together their plan to present to the planning commission.
I like keeping that in the list for the reasons that Mr. Winderton mentioned. There is a little bit of a nexus there, I think, to the type of person. Any other comments or questions? Well, actually, I had one. So the planning commission hasn't seen this. Should, if we were to go this route, do we need to send it to them, or what's your feeling on that?
The sunset on this ordinance is at the end of this month.
Ah. So, okay.
So what's been added here that they are not aware of? Anything in particular? I mean, I would think they're aware of most of these principles and... I mean, I would think they're aware of most of these principles and concepts, so.
Well, what they did send to you is their approval or their recommendation for approval of a reduction in the residential parking ratio. This simply adds kind of clarity of how you would qualify for that.
And I, the way it's worded, I don't have a problem with including it because it says "may include," not "limited to." It's just, yeah.
Mr. Harding?
Just looking for a path forward that addresses the concern that was just brought up. One way that we might proceed is to pass this ordinance and then request community development to, to ask planning, the planning commission later on if they have concerns or suggestions, and we could always come back and, you know, it's better to pass it correctly the first time, but because of certain time restrictions, it may, may make sense to do that and just request that community development review it with the planning commission since they will have a major part of, of the plan.
Mr. Stewart.
What are those time restrictions and constraints? Is there some reason we're passing this tonight?
Actually, I don't think there is a reason that you have to pass it tonight. There's one project that's in the queue that if this doesn't pass, they would be able to follow the former ordinance, which would allow for a 50% reduction, but that project also has got other issues with it that they're waiting for other legislation to pass.
Thank you. Mr. Connect?
Plus, when you start the process of amending city ordinance, you have like a six-month window.
Yes, sir. When the, when the staff initiates a code amendment, yes.
And that is expiring soon.
Yes, 26th to 28th of this month.
I like Mr. Harding's suggestion to go ahead and pass it tonight if that's what the council's inclined to do, and then could we send it to the planning commission for review just to see if they have any additional comments or suggestions?
Yes, I don't see any problem with that at all.
Any further discussion? Ms. Santiago?
I think if we go back to why we, when we asked planning, we asked Mr. Pepperoni to come back with a creative solution to look into this issue, this was, this was started by the council. This is a request of the council for you to come back with a suggestion, so I think this is different than maybe some other, some of the other ordinance or, I'm sorry, code amendments that have come to us because this was actually initiated by the council. We asked you to come back with, with a couple of different things. This is one of them, and although it would be ideal, if, if, if planning commission had another meeting between now and our next council meeting, it would be ideal to just get their, their input on it, but I believe that this was something we asked you to do, and I, and I appreciate the work that has gone into it and, and the initial vetting that went through the planning commission as well.
Now, two planning commissioner members were involved in this discussion. The two that are most interested in these issues are Deborah Jensen, who's an architect, and Jay Monroe, who's a BYU professor who has kind of a special expertise in this area, and both of those have been involved in the discussion and the generation of this. So it didn't, it has not gone to the planning commission, but the planning commission has not been left out.
And those two I personally met with as well, so I'm, I'm some certain comfort level there as well, you know, knowing that they were part of putting this together, so.
The planning commission does meet tomorrow night. I'm happy to give them a copy of this in their meeting and have them contact you or me if they have any concern.
It's too late to notice for actually putting on their agenda, correct?
Right, so all I could do is give it to them and ask them to give us input. That's correct.
Mr. Johns.
Mr. Chair, I just concur with what council member Santiago just said in the sense that, from a legal perspective, state code allows the municipal council, after receiving a recommendation from the planning commission, to amend that recommendation and to pass whatever amended version the council deems appropriate. And in this case, it's not, we, nothing new has been introduced, but instead, unlike some cases where the planning commission have heard a proposal from a developer and then the developer has changed the plan before coming to the, to the council, this is different where the council has actually initiated amendments to the recommendation that they received from the planning commission.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Harding?
I just wanted to clarify, my, my suggestion is not driven by a legal need, other, rather, a good practice. I, I rely heavily on the judgment of the, of the planning commission, and I think this is, I personally would like to know how they feel about it or if they have concerns, and so what was discussed would satisfy that for me, but not for legal reasons, just for comfort in moving forward.
Thank you. I feel the same. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Pepperoni. We really appreciate your work and the work of your department on this. Is there any, any more discussion among council members? Now, this particular item does not have an implied motion because there are actually three versions of this, so we'll need a motion if this is the version that we want to pass to, let's see, how do we do this?
I think the easiest way to do it, according to our, our standard practice, is for someone to make a motion for the TDM plan version that's on the screen to be the version that the council considers for adoption, and then if that passes, then a separate motion to actually approve it.
Sounds good.
Is this a public hearing?
Yes, it is, thank you. Thank you, this, there is a public hearing for this. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this item? Got ahead of myself there.
My name is Catherine Allen, and I am the chair of the Franklin neighborhood. I have appeared before you, before, regarding this issue. In the meantime, from the last meeting to tonight, I have had the opportunity to talk to one of the neighbors who lives directly across the street from Startup Crossing. Her name is Kathy Kinnison, and she has written a letter which I believe I forwarded through the new system of council@provo.org. So you should have that somewhere on your emails. If someone can check that out, that would be really good, because I don't want to read the entire letter that she has sent to us. She expressed her concerns, some very grave concerns, over the safety and parking at her home. She lives at 516 South Freedom, and the Startup Crossing apartment complex is directly across the street from her. She attended the planning meeting when they gave final approval for the Startup Crossing building, and at that time, she also expressed her concerns over inadequate parking requirements, but the city planner in attendance told the planning commission that most of the people who would live at Startup would use public transportation or bicycles as their major mode of transportation, so they were not required to have enough parking spaces for all their residents. Kathy Kinnison strongly disagreed with the planner, but he assured her that this is the trend of the future, and Provo has to join in with what everyone else is doing. My statements, or her statements, I should say, were given little credence, and the project was approved as submitted. Kathy asked how the city was going to improve the road since Freedom Boulevard was already one of the busiest streets in the city. The planner made one of the dumbest comments I've ever heard in a public meeting. "It's kind of the opposite of the field of dreams. If you build it, they will come. If we don't improve the road, people will stop driving." And she did quote that exactly to me. "I don't know where he lives," she said, "but I can guarantee that people in Utah will always have cars if for no other reason than they enjoy driving." This is so totally different from the East. I grew up in the East. I grew up with, transportation would take the train into New York City, the subways and buses, and so I understand how this process works, but at no time did my parents if give up their cars because there were still places that were not accessible by any other means than your own car, and that is so true here in Provo. Her other concerns were regarding backing out of her driveway, and it, she, it's difficult to see oncoming traffic because of all the parked vehicles. It's usually, the traffic is usually running about 40 miles per hour since it's wide open with no stoplights. She feels like she takes her hand, life in her hands every time she tries to get in or out of her driveway. There's a bike lane on her side of the road. More than once, I've had a close call with cyclists who are speeding down Freedom, but I couldn't see them until I was in their path because of parked cars. Then she recites an experience where her driveway was totally blocked and she had to call the police. She has, does, you know, they, they will write tickets, but as soon as one car leaves, another takes its place. And, excuse me, I realize, she concludes, "I realize that Provo and other cities in the valley are growing rapidly. I'm not opposed to adding a few high-density housing projects, but I think the city is ill-advised if they believe that people are going to stop driving their cars. People will always have vehicles. The city needs to require adequate parking provisions for new developments and enforce parking codes for existing housing. Some people don't think about how their actions impact others. They park in driveways because there isn't anywhere else convenient for them to park. I hate to be grumpy and have their vehicle ticketed or towed, but as a homeowner, I have the right to be able to enter and exit my property safely. I hope the city will be more realistic in requirements for high-density housing projects." These were her thoughts. I leave you with the rest of the letter. I also would encourage us to perhaps go back even further than this. We're more at the end of this problem. We need to go backtrack a little bit, go back to where this was pre-zoned to have fewer cars, and let's try and look at what can happen when we think about it. I have yet to see a .5 car. I mean, they come smaller, and they may be considered a .5 car, but they still require a parking space, and the neighbors still are looking for safety and have concerns for your decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I wanted to point out, for, for the benefit of the members of the public, even though we normally allow only two minutes for public comment, Ms. Allen is a, is a neighborhood chair representing a neighborhood that's affected by this, so we allowed her a little bit more time.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Harding?
I'd like to invite Ms. Allen to take a look at the video recording of our work session earlier. We had a presentation by the management company of Startup Crossing, and they are talking about how they are trying to mitigate the problems that you're describing. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Martha Windsor. I live in the Franklin neighborhood. I happen to be the vice chair of the Franklin neighborhood. When I look at this, I'm just really puzzled why we wouldn't be considering what happened at Startup Crossing. At Startup Crossing, we had 101 units, 15 or 16 efficiency units, and the rest are one-bedroom, and I believe there's 76 parking spaces, and currently, their need is 1.5 parking spaces. So if we look at one-bedroom, one parking space per one-bedroom, we still don't meet the current requirements for the Franklin neighborhood and probably for any other Provo neighborhood. When you have additional landscaped areas reserved for parking, who's going to pay to develop that parking? It's going to be something that comes at a later time. Why not look at what the current need is and address it? I'm also puzzled when you look at two-bedroom or, you know, we're going to have three-bedroom. What are the parking requirements for three-bedroom? For two-bedroom, one and a quarter parking spaces just doesn't, doesn't meet the bill, and I'm not sure why you don't understand what the parking needs are. The people in the neighborhood have to live with them, and I'm sure you have to live with them wherever you're at. I'm not sure why you're not considering them. When I look at some of the items here, I'm just a little bit puzzled, too. Priority parking for car sharing, who's going to police that? Priority parking for carpool or, or car, or vanpool vehicles, I can see that. And having an electric vehicle charging facility? Where I live at Franklin Park, we have a young man that has such a vehicle, and when he looked at getting the electric vehicle charging facility, the cheapest he could find was $8,000. He works in Salt Lake. Where he works in Salt Lake, it's not convenient for him to take the front-runner. We can't tell people where they're going to live any more than we can tell them where they're going to work or that we can tell them what they're going to drive. I'm just not sure why that's part of this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. May I ask for a point of clarification on this also? The way I understand this, if the developer doesn't present this plan, then the parking ratios will essentially be what they used to be before we allowed the 50% reduction. Is that correct?
What they currently are, yes. 1.5 for a bedroom and 2.25 for a two-bedroom.
And that if a developer does present this plan to the planning commission, they may or may not reduce that, and the amount that they reduce, it could be anywhere in between depending on how they feel about the plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
Phil, could you just clarify for me? Then this is part of the ordinance that we, takes away the reduction?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to be sure.
The reduction we all want.
This is just an addition to that ordinance?
This is a replacement to that ordinance.
Replacement, and this, this TDM is just an addition to the replacement?
It replaces the ordinance that allowed the 50% reduction.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Are there other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return this to the council for discussion. Mr. Van Buren?
I appreciate Mrs. Windsor's comments about, oh, we're looking at reality. Now, I am not in favor of the 50% reduction, so I do want to get rid of that, but I'm not sure I'm comfortable with this because it doesn't, I don't think it provides for the needs, and so I'm kind of on a spot of, I don't know what to do. I'd probably vote against this, but I don't want the 50% reduction, so I can't, so.
Mr. Johns, could you review the three options that we have?
We have an option to do without.
Yes, so we've got one option which represents the original, sorry, let me cancel that. We've got one option that represents the original staff proposal, as I, as I recall, that proposes getting rid of the 50% reduction and replacing it with a 75% reduction in the...
25% reduction.
Right, 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 70, a minimum requirement of 75% instead of 50%. So 25% reduction in, that's in the ITOD only.
ITOD only.
And then you have an alternate product, recommendation, or not an alternate recommendation.
Hold on, just a minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
So that one would...
So that would result in a parking ratio of 1.15 spaces per unit for a one-bedroom unit and 1.69 spaces per unit for two bedrooms or more. Go ahead, Brian, I just wanted to clarify.
And in that same ordinance, it gets rid of the 50% reduction in the DT1 and the DT2 zones entirely. Then there's an alternate, another alternate version. Kelsey, if you can bring that one up?
Bryce.
Oh, Bryce, sorry. I heard Janine's laugh, and I thought it was Kelsey over there. Okay, so, thanks, Bryce. So this one does the same thing with regard to the ITOD zone as the original. So this one does the same thing with regard to the ITOD zone as the original, but it also allows a 25% reduction instead of a 50% reduction in the DT1 and DT2 zones. And then the third version, which is the one that you've just seen today, gets rid of that 50% reduction entirely in all three zones. Scroll down a little bit, Bryce. And replaces it with a 75, with a 25% reduction that can be further reduced if you have a transportation demand, demand management plan that's approved by the planning commission. Does that make sense?
Is it further reduced to the 50% maximum?
No, it's further reduced to what's right here in, at line 92. It's further reduced to one-to-one for one-bedrooms and one and a quarter for two-bedrooms or more.
So if we don't add the TDM, we could pass version two that would do everything but have the TDM?
Correct.
So TDM is an addition to version two?
Correct.
If we vote not to adopt TDM, then version two would go, which would accomplish what we were hoping to accomplish, which is reducing from 50 to 25%?
That's what that version does, is reduce from, from 50 to 25 in all three zones.
Put against adding TDM.
Mr. Connect.
And in that version two, instead of 1.25 for a two-bedroom, it would be 1.69? So you writing that down, Kay? I don't know. I thought that was important to point out. I'd also like to say, whatever we do here is just an adjustment because we are looking at bringing in a, a parking manager to look at the big picture. And we're, as part of oversight, the council needs to listen to neighborhoods and businesses and our, our planning staff and to look for solutions to problems. And we do have a problem, and we're trying to make an adjustment. And if it's not the right adjustment, we will make further adjustments. That's the nature of legislation. So I guess we just need to figure out which one of these three we want. Sounds like version two has a good possibility with the elements of the TDM. We could still refine that and send it back to the planning commission for, for the recommendation since we have the luxury of changing things and reviewing things in the future.
Do we have, I believe you were going to be affected by this? Is that right?
Yes.
We'll, we'll go ahead and allow you to comment.
I appreciate it. I know that you closed the public hearing, but I came in two weeks ago and I've, I've, one of the developers has been spending time with Bill, and he's, he has, he's done a fantastic job, and all of the staff who've been involved in this. I would, I would really strongly urge the council to approve this third version. The second version and the previous version doesn't help my project. I think that, I mean, I would like, to be honest, I would like to see it approved. I would like to see this version of it approved without the elements of the TDM where it's just one-to-one on a one-bedroom and 1.25 on a two. That would be really helpful. But I, but I, I like all of the, the list of items that, that Bill has proposed when it comes to the elements that could be incorporated. I mean, obviously, a robust bicycle amenity, that's something that we plan on doing, coupling our rent with onsite parking fees. Shuttle service, another thing. I know that Uber is now in, in Provo. A lot of our demographic uses Uber, and so we can provide an Uber stop on one of our dedicated stalls to, you know, for, for that sort of, that sort of thing. And then to the electric vehicle charging facilities point, typically, electric vehicles are compact. A compact stall is seven and a half feet versus eight and a half feet, which means over seven stalls, seven to eight stalls, you'd be able to pick up an additional stall by having electric vehicles. Just a thought to throw out there. But I, you know, to this, this point of the parking ratios, I, I think that, that it sounds like with Startup Crossing, the, the problem has been, obviously, the, the fact that they've been underparked at a one-to-one ratio, right? If you have 100 units, it sounds like they're parked at, at 70 stalls per 100. And I think that this effectively accomplishes what it is that you're looking for because on a one-bedroom, you're, you, you, like, to Bill's point, you cannot be parked less than one-to-one on a one-bedroom. And then on your twos, the lowest you can go down to is 1.25 to, to one. And so I think that this, this gets you here, provided that you're providing some of the other amenities that you need in order to reduce the traffic impact. If it, if it came off of that to a 1.5 or 1.65 on the twos, that would, that would effectively, effectively kill my project. So.
Just to clarify, so you're saying that version two would effectively kill your project as well as version one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harding?
Sorry, I, I had a comment on, on the discussions or the, the comments that were already made. The difference between option two and option three is the ability to go from 1.15 on a single bedroom down to one. Ms. Allen talked about, you know, never seeing a .5 car. We're now talking about a .15 car. And my, my question, I guess, for, for the council to consider is, you know, you might question, how realistic is a, is a TDM? How, how likely is it to have an impact? You know, and I would, I would, I think that's something we should consider. Is, is having a TDM that is approved by the planning commission worth a .15 car? And my, my guess is a, a project that gets built with TDM elements in it is probably going to have less impact even at one-to-one than a non-TDM-designed project that is going in at 1.15. If, if we're worried about, if we're worried about parking and the parking, the impact that will be felt by neighbors, rather than killing the, the TDM aspect of it, we might consider a smaller automatic reduction. So instead of 25%, you know, maybe it's 10% or something reduction, the, the point being, or, you know, maybe even, even if it was dropped completely to 0%. So now, the, the, for one-bedroom, it's 1.5, and that can be reduced down to one if they have an effective TDM. I think that would be more effective than just dropping the TDM and leaving it at the 1.15.
So question, Brian, or maybe this is for you, but it might be for Bill. I'm wondering, the way this is worded, the, what power and discretion does this give to the planning commission? I mean, it talks about one for one-bedroom and one and a quarter for two and, two or more bedrooms. Is that the automatic default if they have a TDM? Or can they lower it from the 2.25 for a two, three-bedroom to whatever number they choose with this being the lower limit?
I think they could reduce it to whatever they wanted with this being the lower limit, with the caveat that it's, we're not starting at 2.25 because there's already a 25% reduction. So 1.69, is that what you said? So we're starting at 1.69, not at 2.25. But they could, I think, I, I think because of the use of the word "may," I think they could reduce it anywhere between 1.69 and 1.25.
And the other would be between 1.15 and one?
Correct.
And the reason I ask is I'm not terribly comfortable about a two- or three-bedroom only having one and a quarter spaces. And is there language earlier that talks about guest parking in addition to this, where the guest parking is rolled up into this number?
Guest parking.
Which is how much normally in a project?
Well, I think the initial ratios... The initial ratios of 1.5 per, the .5 is intended as guest. The 2.25, the .25 is intended as guest.
Right. So, and with the, the guests coming in on the fractional portion, like for every four units, you might have one car as a guest at any given time.
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing we really debated as staff was if we raised the ratio for the two and three-bedrooms too much, are we going to just discourage people from giving us two-bedroom and three-bedroom units? That plays into the other discussion y'all had earlier today on unit size. That was a concern that we had.
Okay, so the final question, you have a, a preference, I take it, that after everything is said and done, the, the third version that we're looking at now is your preference as staff?
Yeah. Yes, as staff, the third version would be our preference. My hesitation is simply this. Mrs. Allen really was correct in one of the things she said, particularly correct in one of the things she said, in that these things talk about lowering trip generation. I have not seen anywhere a nexus between lowering trip generation and people getting rid of the car, which is a point she made. She talked about living in places where people use their car less, but they kept the car. That's the Achilles' heel in this, is that these things will lower trip generation, which is good for our environment. It's good for us in many ways. It's good for us in many ways. But will these things lower car ownership? That is an outstanding question. And if it doesn't lower car ownership, then the neighbors are impacted. I'm sorry to make this difficult, but that's the bottom line.
Thank you for your honesty.
If, if I may, one fairly clear, if we're going to throw around nexus, one clear nexus with that is when you have your one-bedroom apartments, which will nicely fit a couple, and many couples along the Wasatch Front have two cars. But when you reduce trip generation, when you give these alternatives, it may be very difficult for a couple to give up their, you know, give up one car, but it's not nearly as difficult to go from two cars down to one car in a couple, for a couple, if they have other transportation alternatives. And so I think that is, you know, some of these TDM things not only would reduce trip, trip generation, but also reduce the necessity of having two cars per couple.
Mr. Stewart.
I have a real-life example. We were going to try to go down to one car, but my wife has art lessons today, and I have counsel, so we have two cars.
So what we don't have in here is what was mentioned today by EMG Property Management, that they actually offer an incentive. And that incentive could come in various ways, but they incentivize their couples that have two cars to get rid of one of them. And, and that could be also, I don't, I don't know how we, we could add it in here, but you know, an incentive program to reduce the number of vehicles on the premises. I think that's an important step in the right direction. I also like the option of the landscaped area reserved for future parking. That doesn't necessarily get rid of the car. It, it admits, like you said, that they may end up having the car until such time as maybe we have mass transit and they really feel secure in getting, getting rid of it. And so the, the landscaped parking area is kind of the, the transition and, and the, the safeguard that we're not going to have a, a parking problem because we can create parking if we need it.
In response to Ms. Windsor's question too, she said, she said something along the lines that, "Don't you understand that there, that there's not enough parking?" And we do understand there's not enough parking, and we're trying to balance the need for parking at the same time, trying to plan for the future in some ways where maybe parking is reduced. We don't know. But, but another key element that may not be clear is that what we don't want to do right now is to push out market rate development. And if we, if we push out market rate development, then we get more need in the downtown in another way. And another way that we already have. We already have a lot of need in the downtown. And so what we don't want to do is push out market rate development. And I feel like the developers who are providing market rate development have been engaged in this process of helping us understand their performance. They've gone through their performance with this, and this is what happens with the parking ratios. And so for me, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, the TDM version because I feel like it was, it, it's not perfect. It doesn't, it doesn't provide two cars for every unit, but it's better than what we have right now. And it doesn't, and it's not going to push out the market rate development, which we really need to balance out what we currently have in the downtown right now. And so for me, I, I have a comfort level here, knowing that this, this is a, this is a good, a step up for now. It doesn't totally fix everything, but I, but it does, does address the needs without putting other things at risk that we're trying to encourage in our downtown. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Are there any other comments? Well, I guess I'll make one then. First of all, as already been acknowledged, I, I think we should view this as an interim solution and be prepared to revisit this in relatively short period of time, based on recommendations from our new parking manager, maybe ideas that come from community development based on feedback and so forth. So that's, that's the first thing. I'm most comfortable going with staff's recommendation on this, on, on the version three, but there's, there's no, there's no exact science here on knowing. I, I do think that whatever we do, we're, we're trying to strike a balance without having the benefit of a crystal ball of anticipating some of these trends involving mass transit and gradual change in behavior. And we know that the, it's going to take a long time, but it's, it's really hard to predict how long. But I like version three as a good starting point. Any other comments?
As we were reminded by the neighborhood chair and vice chair, the staff recommended the 50% reduction, and it didn't work. So this is an interim step. Hopefully, this works. And if it doesn't work, what happens in the neighborhood? And the parking problems?
It's a good point. We could end or shoot. Mr. Harding?
It's still my estimation that a project with one-to-one for one-bedroom and one-to-1.25 for two-bedrooms with a transportation demand management program provides more protection to the neighborhood than a project without a TDM that is parked at 1.15. So that actually, having these TDMs would, would give me more confidence that it's protecting the neighborhoods.
Are there any more comments or discussion on the item? Mr. Connect.
I move that we adopt a version three that has been proposed by staff and that is before us on the screen.
And remind me, the way you phrased that, Mr. Jones, is that we're...
That we, that, I think what I had said before, suggested before, was a motion to consider option three for adoption.
So moved.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? Seconded by Mr. Harding. Further discussion on the motion?
If it doesn't pass... If it doesn't pass, we still can vote on option two?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor? So that's Mr. Harding, Mr. Sewell, Mr. Connect, Ms. Santiago, and Mr. Winington, and Mr. Van Buren, and Mr. Stewart opposed. So... Oh, those opposed, thank you. I'm still getting this down, Mr. Van Buren. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just interject, I don't know that this will provide Mr. Van Buren any comfort, it may not, but one of the reasons for following this procedure is because it's now clear what the majority of the council is going to vote on. So he could, again, you know, this is up to him and every council member as far as how they want to vote, but he could send the message that he doesn't like this proposal by voting against the motion to consider it, but then vote for it in this one to send the message that he doesn't want the current ordinance, which reduces it by 50% to remain. And I don't mean to pick on Mr. Van Buren by suggesting that, but I'm just saying that one of the reasons for following this method as a matter of practice is to weed out issues about conflict over which version to vote on before the vote takes place.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
So the TDA version three is the draft that is now before us to vote on for formal adoption. Is there... What did I say? TDM, okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote on adopting that version. All in favor? Are there any opposed? So that is, can I just say, Mr. Stewart opposed, and everyone else in favor?
It was Mr. Van Buren that was opposed, so...
Mr. Van Buren, boy, I'm not having a good night today. Thank you, Mr. Van Buren was opposed. Okay. Thank you. All right, let's move on to item number seven, which is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of 22.5 acres of real property. We'll turn this one over to, looks like, Mr. Pepperoni.
Can we go to the exhibits, please? This is a 72-lot subdivision located along 1600 West and 890 South, actually extending all the way up to 600 South. The zoning being requested is R18. You want to just flip through it? That's fine. So this is 1600 West. This is 600 South. And this is 890 South. 890 South is a small, mostly unimproved road that were Footprinters Parks. It's on the north border of Footprinter Park. The elementary school that was talked about in great detail in the last public hearing you had is right here on the north side of 600 and on the east side of 1600 West. The developer's gone through quite a bit of effort to acquire other property, to extend the subdivision from this area that you originally saw up into this area, so that a pedestrian way could be obtained for students to get up to the elementary school without traveling on the narrow 1600 West. As I said, it's 72 lots, it's R18 zoning. Having attended many of the meetings of the West Side Committee, I would just say that in regard to those goals and objectives related to agricultural preservation, this section of property, going beyond the subdivision, but this larger section is far enough east that it appeared to me, from the discussions I attended, that this was not an area that was anticipated for long-term agricultural preservation or production. It's as far enough east that it was anticipated that development would likely take place over here. That's all I have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pepperoni? Thank you. This item is open for a public hearing. Is there a neighborhood chair representing this area in attendance?
Beth Allagood, Southwest Area Chair. Sorry, I'm getting overcooled. This has been a development that's been in the works for a very long time, and the neighborhood really appreciates Mr. Prince and his efforts to address the concerns of the neighborhood, to have that alternative route for the elementary students. We really, really appreciate all the effort that he's put into this. The concern of the neighborhood still, and Mr. Taylor apologizes that he can't be here tonight, is still 1600 West, and I know this has nothing to do with the development, but that 1600 West is still underdeveloped to the point that if this is going to be a major collector road, it should probably be looked on to be developed faster since the development has started and coming faster. But again, we appreciate Mr. Prince's efforts to address the concerns and to put a product that is really nice and will fit well in with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question. So... You were an active member of the West Side Planning Committee?
Yes.
And so do you feel this kind of fits the vision of what we were talking about? Does it fit into the West Side nicely? You kind of just said that, but I'm just reviewing, you know, all the discussions we had, and Bill just talked about how this is not an area where we could necessarily preserve agriculture, so...
If you, I kind of wish the slide was here, is Mr. Prince actually did a block concept plan for the entire block, integrating it with Footprinters Park. He had some higher density in a little bit of areas that really would, I think, add to the area of where we wanted to preserve agriculture, bring the ratios of density away from that. Integrated well with Footprinters Park. I like the fact that he has some, he has a very nice waterfall feature in it, a little bit of open space. Personally, I would have loved to see a little bit more open space, but I think that was one concept of the West Side planning that didn't get developed as well as I wanted it to. I'm sorry if this keeps going on and off. But as far as integrating within the block, I think his plans and... Do you have your block plan? Oh, it should be. Just, if you have a moment, just look at it, and it really integrates the whole block together. And since this is one of the areas that we weren't looking at agricultural preservation, it has turned, it looks like a nice community that will fit in well out on the West Side.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and take this item back to the council for discussion. Ms. Santiago?
First, I just want to thank Mr. Prince too for being so willing to work. I know this plan has taken on many different renderings. This is different from the last one, where there were cul-de-sacs and different, it was a different plan. And I know that because of the desire for connectivity, both with the streets and with bike lanes and those types of things, it's a different plan today than it was not too long ago. So, but I did have a question about the, on the public work side, and I don't know if we have someone who's prepared to talk about the public work side. I think all of those issues have been addressed, correct? As far as stormwater and sewer, and all those things have already been addressed? It's not something that we need to discuss here?
Yeah, that's correct. All the departments have approved the preliminary plan, which solves those utility issues.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harding?
Just with the concern that was brought up on 1600 West, and as development fills in, we'll receive more and more pressure. I'm trying to remember back to our earlier discussion on the five-year CIP, but do we know if 600 West, sorry, 1600 West widening or, you know, building to more of the collector standards, if that is in the five-year CIP? No, it's not? Okay. You know, I don't know what the proper way to, you know, request that be considered, but I do think, and maybe that's as we work on the Southwest Master Plan, but that, I believe, is something that we need to look at sooner than later. And I would also like to echo Ms. Santiago's thoughts. Just thank you to Mr. Prince. He's been very accommodating, has listened very carefully to neighbors as well as council concerns and committee concerns, and I think this is going to be a great project for the neighborhood, for the residents, and for the city. So, thank you.
Are there any other comments?
This is sure different than last time with the concerns. This is wonderful.
Thank you. I think Mr. Prince deserves some kind of medal here for completing a marathon or something, I don't know. We did. If there's no further council discussion, we do have an implied motion to pass the ordinance amending the zone map classification, as has been described. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item number eight, which is an implied motion on an ordinance... Oh, no, wait a minute. Let's see. No, this is, there's not two on this one. There is, yeah. Okay, an implied motion on an ordinance amending the consolidated fee schedule to add a meter reading fee for customers who elect not to have an AMI meter, and this will be presented by Travis Spall. There he is.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Council, for giving me this opportunity. This is one of those items that we've been looking at for about three years, frankly. It's one of those things that we were hoping we would not have to have an opt-out. We were hoping that everybody'd be excited and take these meters, and we would not have to have this. I think Councilman Stewart could tell you, we went to a meeting, an APPA meeting where this was discussed three years ago, and we knew that this might be an issue. So as we have implemented the AMI rollout, we've installed about 16,000 meters, and at this time, we've had 26 customers who have said that they do not want an AMI meter. So we figured, you know, with that much, many people that are raising this concern, that we'd like to at least give them an option that they can opt out and have somebody go out and manually read those meters if they do not have an AMI meter. As we've looked at this throughout Utah, there isn't any other utilities, I don't believe, that have allowed an opt-out. This is kind of new for Utah, but it is being done in other parts of the country. And so, and we do feel like, as these issues have come out, myself and staff have tried to go out and talk to people, and many of them have taken the meters, but there are some that absolutely do not want a new meter. And so we are trying to implement a fee, and an option for some, for these people to opt out. Now, the fee that we are trying to implement on the consolidated fee schedule covers the cost for a staff member, a full-time staff member, to go out, read the meter by hand, bring it in, put it in the billing system. Right now, we do meter reading with part-time staff. Those costs are pretty low, but as the new meters are installed, all those readings will go into the database automatically, and we won't have any type of paper system to use. So this will be a different system that we have to implement for the people who choose not to do it. And so we've gone through and we've looked at who could be, who we should let opt out, and as we've talked about this before, the people who we think can opt out are people who have ownership of their property and who've signed an opt-out form and meet a few criteria. The criteria is they don't have a history of one year for meter, they don't have a history for meter dampening. They're not a poly-phase meter. They haven't changed their name two times within the last 12 months. They haven't had a disconnect notice for 12 months, and the meter is accessible to the meter reader. If it's not accessible, then we'll still have to do this AMI meter. Those are the, those customers that will be able to opt out. The fee, if you can go to the next one, Bryce, as we calculated, is, the next slide is $25 per month for the option to opt out. And that's what the Energy Board has recommended to come forth. And I'll have any questions, if you have any.
Questions?
Travis, have people that, once they understood there's going to be a fee, chosen to take the meter?
We have not, we have not given anybody the fee yet. We've not told them that there would be a fee to opt out, so I don't know how many will accept that, or I don't know at this point.
Mr. Van Buren?
Travis, just, what did we talk before? You talked, the three people of the installed ones have opted out, and you just said 26. Is 26 the ones that want to, but they're not going to be eligible?
26 are the total amount of people who have said that you refuse to take the meter at this point. We've gone through and we've taken a really close look at it. And so there are 10 that don't meet the criteria. There are 10 others that have had disconnect notices, but they haven't been within the year, so they would probably be eligible. And there are six that are absolutely eligible. So of the 26, there's six that are absolutely eligible, and then there's 16 with those 10 that we would probably say would be eligible now.
And of the meters that you've installed already, what percentage of the city's total meters have been?
We have 16,000 that we've installed of approximately 36,000, so you're just under 50%.
So we're maybe talking one per thousand would choose to opt out?
Yes.
If it stays the same? I mean, that's a real rough survey, but...
That's correct. And we hope you stay that, about that ratio.
One more question about if they choose to opt out now, and I'm trying to find it in the ordinance here that says, you know, now, maybe a year down the road, they decide, I don't want to pay the $25. Would we assess them at that point to go out and put in another? Is there a charge for that?
There'd be a charge, and it's the same fees that we do for, that's on the consolidated fee schedule now. And so they would have, they would get a meter, and it would be a hookup fee with that meter.
Look, $95, a $95 charge. And the reason we do that is just because we have to send a truck out? It seems to me it might be worth the effort to drop that 95 just to get them on the AMI meter, so that we don't have to send that out, that guy out in the future.
Sure, and that could be, that could be something we could put on the consolidated fee schedule. We're just using the existing fees for those.
Just to follow up on that, now, there was a $95 charge, and there was a $238 charge. Can you tell me the difference between those two charges?
The $95 charge was for the old meter, because the old meters are less costly, and we weren't charging for an old meter, because we're changing all those out. The higher-expense one was for the $135 meter that it cost. Those new meters cost more money.
Given the scenario that Mr. Winson talked about, if someone opted out, went for a while, decided, ah, I want that new meter, they would be charged, not the 95, they would be charged the 238.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
I don't know. Gary, did you understand that?
Okay, no, that's what Brian was just trying to explain to me. Give me that one more time.
The more, we were charging the actual cost for the meter and for the labor to go out there, but we could, we could look at that and give them an incentive to come on to the system. We were not going to charge that during the implementation. We were not going to charge that during the implementation. Right now, during the implementation through September, there is no cost, basically, to opt out and to come back on, but after the implementation, then there would be a cost to go out there and change the meter out, because we, by that time, we don't have anybody doing that work. We'd have to send our crews out to do it. So, I mean, that could be something that we could come back and put on the consolidated fee schedule to encourage that if you'd like us to.
Would that make a difference to you guys? I mean, it seems to me it saves having to manually enter something and send a manual guy out all the time.
Absolutely, and that's, the cost that I was estimating is just for the labor cost to go read it. It doesn't really take into consideration the cost to get that data into the database, Karen's employees, some of the soft costs that will impact her, because it'll be a different, it'll be a different process to get those reads into the billing system after the AMI meters are installed.
So, to me, just getting them on the system's worth something, even if down the road.
Definitely, that's, that will be a cost that we'll have to take into consideration.
Mr. Stewart.
Travis, could you ask the Energy Board to look at that and come back with the recommendation of the council?
You bet. Will do. For this one, we're just looking at the monthly cost for the, for the...
We'll replace the meter later.
Yep, we'll do that. Thanks. Councilman Stewart.
Mr. Jones.
Just to clarify that, Travis is correct that when he says what the current draft of the policy says, when it talks about imposing that $230 fee on someone who signs up later, that fee's actually already on the consolidated schedule. So, it's simply a matter of internal policy for them to decide whether or not to assess that to somebody who's newly signing up. So, it'd be appropriate for the Energy Board to weigh in. It's not actually something that needs to come back to the council, as far as the assessment of that fee that's already on the schedule.
But according to what you just said, Brian, it's only assessed to those people that come in later. All the ones we're putting in now, the residents aren't being charged the $230 for it.
Correct.
It's all done at the city's cost, not the individual's cost.
Right.
So, if I have a brand-new house that I'm building, do you give me the meter for free, or you come out and charge me $238?
You're going to be charged the 200, the new connection, you're going to be charged for the meter?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I guess we'll have to wait and see how many people total we have to deal with. That might be a factor in the discussion that the Energy Board has.
Sure.
Question, probably for Brian. So, the ordinance we're voting on tonight, is it just the $25 service, monthly service, or are we talking about those other two fees also?
All you're passing, because, because those other fees are already on the schedule. So, for example, the $230 fee, it's on the schedule already for precisely the circumstance that Mr. Connect referenced, that it's on the schedule as a new installation.
But is that for any, any meter?
That's for a new installation of an AMI meter, right? And the $95 is new installation of a...
There's a hookup fee for, I mean, a year ago, before the AMI meters, there was a hookup fee that would be charged at new construction.
Right.
So, that's not anything.
Right.
Exactly.
So, all that's being voted on tonight is the $25 a month fee, meter reading fee for the, for those who opt out.
Any further questions for Mr. Ball? All right, thank you. So, let's see. This one is not a public hearing, but we will allow public comment for up to 10 minutes if there's somebody, two minutes per person if there's somebody who has come to comment on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Van Buren.
I'd just like to take a minute. I know we're trying to hurry here. As this was proposed, I got three phone calls from people who want to opt out of the system. And as I did some research and talked to them, my understanding is that most people want to opt out, either opt out for one of two reasons. One is, it's a privacy thing. They're looking at the way the meters work. You can monitor minute-by-minute use of electricity or second-by-second. I mean, it's a constant monitoring. And they're thinking, and I'm not justifying that this is right-thinking, but I'm just trying to explain the people that are wanting to opt out. As they look at it as government surveillance, one thing, and with all the discussion in the news and everything going on right now, they just don't want to have that kind of information being collected about their use of power all the time in a government agency. So, that's one thing. The other reason on privacy, the other privacy question is, it's been put forward that as a power agency looks at peak usage, that one of the benefits for the power company and the individual can be that they can look at their piece, or peak usage and say, we can cut down on electricity. We're using too much here, let's look at it, and so it's a way of conserving. But then the fear is that it will get carried further, that the conservation now is not the customer choosing to conserve. Now, the power companies take those dials and they say, okay, our peak, 1:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon, that's when we pay most of our energy, that's when people are using most of our energy, so let's double the price of the energy. Now, Travis would never do that, and I'm not worried about that. But that's the philosophy, that's the thinking, that's the worry that these people are having. Now, and then they can, then the power company can now manipulate our behavior a little bit by putting the price incentives to a point that you don't want to be real. And so, that's the one area. The other area is safety. There's a feeling out there that these meters are broadcasting a wave that is dangerous. And Travis and I had a long talk on this, and he says, there's not a study yet that showed that's true. But that doesn't take the worry away, and that doesn't take the discussion that's going on out there about, they still have it on microwaves. Every once in a while, run into some person building a new house, and I'll say, where's your microwave going to go? Oh, we don't have microwaves in our house, because they're too dangerous. Cell phones, the same thing, but it's real, and it's real to them. So, that puts us to where I'm coming from. I would like to propose maybe an amended version of this. Is this a resolution or an ordinance?
An ordinance, yeah.
That we amend it, instead of, those people are choosing not to opt it for two, they're not reasons of anything besides emotional, and they're conscious. And so, they say, now you're going to charge us $25 a month to following our conscience. And that's punitive, that's excessive, that's more. And then, if we decide to sign up down the road somewhere, then you charge us $230, and you gave it to everybody else. So, I'm trying to, I don't know if we can have a motion or a substitute motion that say, if we could reduce this fee to $10 a month, and I talked to Travis earlier, and if there's a way we can reduce the cost of reading the meters, and maybe we only read them once every three months, we charge, kind of like we do averaging on our bills anyway, and eliminate the need for someone to go out there every month, make that a $10 charge. Now, it's not as punitive, now it's there, and they know. But I just am trying to say, let's build goodwill instead of have these people dig in deeper. So, I wondered if we consider that. Now, I'm challenging Travis a little bit, and I think he could probably beat my argument, so I can say it anyway, Travis, and you can come at me. But we talked earlier today about, in our CPI budget, if we don't install the meters, that'll cost about $400,000 a year to read the meters that aren't the IMI meters now. That was part of that note in our budget discussion today. And so, if you just take that out and say, okay, there's 20,000 users, there's 20,000 meters that are getting read, and we're spending, we're going to spend $400,000, so that means it's costing us about $20 annually to read the meters of the existing customers. But then now, on the other hand, we're going to say, we're going to charge $25 a month for these six times, you know, maybe there's, maybe there's 12, maybe there's 20 people in our community that are going to opt out. And so, I, that's $300 annually per meter, and we're talking our budgets for $20, and so, and I know there's costs associated, because we're going to change the whole system, and Karen, you're probably saying, let me tell you how much it costs to hand in, or all that stuff. But I'm just trying to reach out and say, I'd like to propose that we change that to $10 a month, and at some point in time, drop that $230 fee to opt in at the point in time they opt in, so we encourage people to opt in instead of say, you know, don't opt in. If you try to opt in now, we're going to charge you. I'm just trying to... So, anyway, I don't know how that goes into a motion, Brian, but...
Oh, sorry, my microphone wasn't on. As far as the motion goes, I think it'd be two parts. One would be to amend the ordinance that's been proposed at line 46 to replace the $25 charge with a $10 a month charge, and two, to request that the Energy Department reconsider its policy of assessing the $230 fee for signing up later. That's your motion, then? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Van Buren. Is there a second?
I will second it for discussion purposes.
Thank you. Mr. Harding. Mr. Connect.
I'm inclined to support you, Kay, on this. I would point out that the economies of scale of reading every house is different than if we have one truck go out and read one house in every neighborhood. That is really costly, but I'm still inclined to support you.
Mr. Winson.
I still like the $25, but I do believe that if we could get that, second part of that amendment, where we, if they would accept an AMI meter, that we could reduce or eliminate that $230 charge.
Mr. Stewart.
Everybody said they'd take that, the Energy Board's recommendation, so I think that's all even done. I'd like to get the Energy Board's recommendation, what they feel, and then we can vote on whether we should do that or not. In fact, they can just decide unilaterally, right? They can decide, so let's let the Energy Board...
Deal with that one.
Deal with it.
Well, I think ultimately, the motion is for the Energy Board to deal with that in the sense that all the motion says is asking them to reconsider that. So, they'll take it to the Energy Board, and a decision will be made.
I mean, if we don't vote for the $10, the Energy Board still is going to look at it.
Correct.
Right.
I'd like to make a comment also. I got one of those phone calls, too. I think you may have been one of your constituents, lived on the West Side, and I agree with your position on this. I almost had the feeling that it was almost a religious issue in a way, and I sympathize that, I felt like I was, we would be penalizing somebody for a deeply-held opinion that this could harm their safety or privacy. So, I think this is a temporary thing. The numbers that we're talking about are small, they'll gradually decrease over time, so I'm not too worried about the financial impact of going to $10, and I would support that. And I also support the second part of the motion to, I think, if somebody wants to come in later, we should not be putting any obstacles in their way, because it benefits us as well as them, to have them sign up later.
Santiago.
I have a question about that second part. If we, if you allow someone who didn't put the AMI meter in later to come online and not charge them the fee, are you playing favorites by allowing them to do that, but not allowing someone with new construction to do the same?
I don't think so. As long as, I mean, I think the policy would be that, as long as the residence is in existence at the time that they had, that they opted out, right? Which is going to be the case with anybody that opts out, so I don't think that's a problem.
So, and the other thought, the other part to that is, in our fee discussions, we have, this council's been, we've always asked for change, that we want to recover the cost of service, and that we don't want to subsidize, we want to recover the cost, and that's been our rally cry, as much as possible to recover the cost. What it costs us to deliver the service, we, you know, we want to recover that. You know, these are small numbers, but in principle, that's where I'm struggling a little bit, because that has been our rallying cry to recover the cost of service, and although I do respect someone's right to be able to not, to opt out, to say, hey, I don't want this on my home, I think that's a good option, to allow them to do that, but there is a cost of service, and yet, the numbers are so small that it's not, it doesn't, it's not a financial reason why we would be doing that. It's more on principle for me, but that's kind of what I'm grappling with, because I want to also support that, but there's that part of me, too, that is sort of grappling with that.
Mr. Harding.
I wanted to echo what Mr. Van Buren said earlier about, you know, possibly even requiring the averaging program. I forget the title of that, or even, you know, even if it's every three months or something. If we measured every three months, and if it costs $20 each time, or $25 each time you read it, $10 a month over the three months would cover it. So, we could get full-cost recovery, even with, you know, being aware that we don't want it to appear punitive. You know, I think, I think that was a pretty strong argument there. The one thing that I want to slightly disagree with Mr. Van Buren on was the time of day. And I know he wasn't saying this, but he was, he was explaining a concern about the meters and the time of day, and, you know, maybe the city would, or wouldn't in this case, but, you know, charge double when we're talking about the cost of full-cost recovery. I don't remember the models exactly, I don't have those numbers, but it's very possible that the energy, to provide that peak energy, costs double, if not more, to provide during those peak hours. And so, I would be okay, I think, I think we're okay, I think we should look to charging people the actual cost that it is to provide them with energy as it's delivered, and I'm okay with off-peak hours costing half as much as on-peak hours, but I definitely don't want to see, you know, if we're here, and now we're just going to raise the price for the peak hours, but it may do something like this, because if we can cover more of the cost for the peak hours, now we're not subsidizing it with the energy used on non-peak hours. And I know that's not the topic of today, I just had to throw that in, because I am a proponent of time of day, and I think that helps us get to the cost recovery, and it just aligns everyone's incentives, so I'm a big proponent of that, that's why I threw it in there. But I will be voting for Mr. Van Buren's motion.
Mr. Stewart.
I don't think you can, people that are already anti-government are going to be excited about being billed without the meter being read. They're already suspicious, and to have an estimated bill for three months, two of the three months, you know, how are you going to estimate it? You don't know what they're going to be using. I think that's problematic, particularly with people that already are suspicious of the government.
Just a comment to that, the person that brought that up was one of the people that called me about it, who is suspicious of the government, of us.
But that's one of 16. We don't know how the other 15 are going to feel. I know, I don't like to get billed on an estimated bill personally.
I don't think that's part of the...
Travis would like to make a comment.
Mr. Van Buren just mentioned here, I don't know if you heard, that that issue isn't part of the amendment. I think that would be up to the discretion of the power company on that.
Any further discussion on this issue? Yes. Oh, Ms. Santiago.
So, it was mentioned by Mr. Harding that $10 a month would be full-cost recovery, and I just wanted to give Mr. Ball a chance to address that, if you feel like that's full-cost recovery. You also, you talked about soft costs. If they did it every three months?
If they did it every three months.
But I'd just like to hear your opinion on that. And then the, I mean, you talked about the soft costs that we're not recovering, and then you talked about the $25 fee that you felt that would be an actual cost recovery. So can you talk about the difference?
Sure. And I think that's, that's an option, like, to do it every three months. I will tell you, if you remember, about 15 years ago, there was a big issue in Springville when they were estimating bills, and there was a big, a big deal back there. I could get you the, get you the newspapers of what happened. Sometimes when you estimate costs and you estimate wrong, and they pay a lower bill, and then they use a lot of energy in the summer because there's a lot of difference between the off-peak hours, the off-peak months to your, where you use a lot of air conditioning. And so there's a big raise during the June, July, August timeframe. So we'd have to be careful with that and make sure that we estimate correctly. The only thing I don't know is how our current billing system would handle that because we have issues with that until we get the new billing system. And so I would, can I kind of throw this to Karen, and she can kind of talk about some of her soft costs that we haven't estimated? And maybe she can answer that better of how they could do, they could read it every three months. Maybe she would have a better idea on that than I would.
While she's coming up, if I could just, point of clarification. So do we only have the averaging program for our natural gas? Do we not have that for energy?
You're confusing two different things. So I think you're talking budget billing, which is levelized billing?
Yes.
Yeah. That's not your meter reading. We're talking estimation on your meters, like George was saying. When we budget bill or levelize bill, we have to read the meters. We're still collecting an actual reading on those. So I think what maybe you're looking at is more of a estimation for those electric meters. We've never estimated our electric meters. We estimate our water meters. We do not estimate our electric meters. Going into a different territory for me to do that because, like Travis says, it's a little bit different when you're estimating electric than your water. So I would not say I could or couldn't accomplish what you're looking for right now without doing further testing myself.
And again, Mr. Chair, this is not the amendment. The amendment is not to go on average. That's, that was an option we talked about, if that we could recover the cost somehow. So I don't want to get too hung up on that that's part of what my amendment was.
I think Travis did not include the labor for the billing staff to actually input the data. So currently, our handheld devices are going away. They are actually losing life. And so kind of good timing as we're moving on to our AMI meters. The handheld devices, we have old software currently that run the handheld devices as well as our billing system. We would have to upgrade the handheld devices to collect those readings in our devices, and it's not compatible with our current billing system. So we're really creating a complicated mess if we continue using our handheld devices to read those meters. So therefore, we would need to eliminate the handheld devices, manually read those meters that are any that opt out, actually really manually take a reading and bring them back into the billing system, had someone manually key those into the billing system, and then proceed with the billing process. If that makes sense.
And if I understand, we're going to do that anyway. The argument is, do we charge $25 or $10 for it? That's, that's the argument. And I think as Ms. Santiago's question, are we getting full recovery? Obviously, we're not. It's going to cost us, if we only get $10, $15 times 16, what's that? Somebody quick, less than $200 a month. My next question is, it seems like a few months ago, we were dealing with some solar energy issues, and we hired a consultant, spent a lot of money, and had him review all our energy costs related to solar. We spent a lot of time, a lot of meetings deciding this is what we should charge. And then there was some uprising from that, and lo and behold, that, that charge that was justified didn't become near as important. I don't know that cost recovery is always the bottom line. And for 16 people, I, you know, that's all.
Thank you. Yes, we have had a second, well, let's see, yes, we did. We've had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? So just to clarify, the motion is to amend the, implied motion.
To amend the ordinance as presented to you, to change the fee from 25 to 10, and to specifically ask on behalf of the council that the Energy Department reconsider the issue of the $230 signup fee.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Well, I do have a, $240 a month is what we're looking at. If we went down to $10, if there were 15 people, is that what, is that the amount that we're, $240 a month?
Forty, yeah. You said. Yes, the difference between the 25 and the 10 is $15. If we had 16, it probably would be closer to 32 since we're only halfway through implementing, assuming that people would still be willing, still want to opt out at $10 a month. But somewhere around, somewhere between 16 and 30. And if it's 16, then the difference is $240 a month.
Sixteen would be 480. If it doubles.
Oh, yes, yes. And if, and if we had 32 people opting out, the difference between the $25 charge and the $10 charge would be, would be the 480.
Is there any other discussion in the motion?
So this is just to change the.
Change the draft.
The draft.
To amend it as indicated. All right, I'll call for a vote then, to amend the draft that we're discussing. All in favor? That's Mr. Harding, Mr. Van Buren, Mr. Sewell, and Mr. Connect, all opposed. It's Mr. Winderton, Ms. Santiago, and Mr. Stewart. Okay, so now, the draft before us is, has the $10 a month instead of 25, and with the suggestion to relook at the hookup fee later, as had been previously indicated. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt that?
I just offer my support because I feel like it's, you know, better than what we have currently. So I support this at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Santiago, any further comments? Not all in favor? And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Let's move on to item number nine. A resolution appropriating up to $70,980 in the City Recorder's Office for the funding of elections for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. And this is to be presented by our City Recorder, Janine Leese.
Councilmembers, administration, thank you very much for this opportunity. As you all are well aware, we will be holding municipal elections this year in November. We have four positions that will be on the ballot, the mayor's position, the citywide council position, District Two, and District Five. In, in the past, we've contracted with Utah County to use their electronic voting machines, and it's worked out very well. We've had a very good relationship with the county. This year, in February, all the recorders in the county met with Scott Hogenson and Brian Thompson, and they informed us that they would love to help us with the election, but because of concerns of running two types of elections, they will be only offering the vote-by-mail election. And this is due to a lot of interest, not only countywide but statewide also. And there were 21 out of 29 counties that did a vote-by-mail in 2016. So they gave us some estimated costs. They said, okay, if every city in the county contracts with us to do the vote-by-mail, these are your costs. And then, of course, those costs would go up as more and more cities did not. As of this morning, there are, out of 24 cities, there's 14 that have said that they are definitely going to contract with the county. And there are two more. American Fork and Pleasant Grove are both in the process of still making that decision. The largest city right now that is not contracting with the county would be Highland at 9,500 registered voters. Provo City has about 42,000 registered voters. So after that meeting in February, I put some estimates. Since we will not be able to use the electronic machines this year, we have two options. We can contract with the county to do the vote-by-mail, or we could run our own election in-house. It would be an optical scan election, which means we would have polling locations. Voters would vote on paper ballots. The ballots would, at the end of the day, the ballots would be brought to the city center, and they would be run through scanners to count the votes. And so these are the costs that I have anticipated that it would be, if the city goes with a vote-by-mail with the county, with the cities that anticipate involved in going with the vote-by-mail, our cost would be 147,300. If we do our own individual optical scan, the cost would be 166,800. Now, if American Fork and Pleasant Grove both decide to opt out and run their own elections, that cost would be similar to the optical scan at 166,400. So the resolution before you is to appropriate, since we only have $20,000 in our election budget right now, rather than trying to appropriate or budget 146, up to $146,000 in next year's budget, we are requesting that we divide that in half. So we round it up to 170,000. We ask for 85,000 each year. So this year, since we have $20,000 in our budget, we would be asking for an appropriation of $65,000 for the current year. And then next year, we would budget an additional 85,000 to get us to the 170,000. Are there any questions? George.
If the cost is less, then you would just not request as much next year.
I'm sorry?
If the cost is less, then you would request less next year.
Absolutely. If we find out, the county has asked that we let them know by April 3. So by April 3, they will know for sure which cities will be contracting with them. And if the cost is, if American Fork, Provo, and Pleasant Grove decide to do a vote-by-mail, the cost would be around the 147. So we would, we would be able to budget less in the next year.
Mr. Shacking.
So if you look at the chart in front of you, at the, at the high cost, we would be appropriating 64,500 in 2017 that we would add to the 20,500 in the budget. If the cost is $147,000, we rounded that number to 150. The appropriation would only be 65,000 for 2018 and.
As opposed to the 85.
Right. And we'll have time between now and the budget's approval to figure that number out.
And I might tell you, I don't know that it's going to be true this year, but every year, the county has given us an estimate, and every year, they have come in below the estimate. So I think when they estimate, they kind of do a worst-case scenario, trying to say, okay, I'm going to give you the worst case. That way, if it comes in less, then, then you won't have to pay as much. And they true up the costs after the elections. So we will not pay any more than the actual costs, regardless of what the interlocal agreement says. By the way, there will be an interlocal agreement. If we choose to contract with the county, we will be coming back later for authorization to approve an interlocal agreement with the county.
Just curious, the number that's listed here, 70,980, isn't on the spreadsheet? What's the difference?
That's correct. That was, when we drafted the, the title of this and saved it, we were using the old numbers.
Okay.
And they changed this morning. So if you, if, if, we have a couple resolutions that are ready to go with the 64,500, it's already in there for you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Winderton.
This appropriation, it comes out of the general fund reserve, is that right? We haven't budgeted for this necessarily.
Not in this current year. We have 20,000 in the current budget.
And that's just a carryover, the 20,000.
Yes. And then we would carry over the 20,000 along with the additional appropriation.
Yeah.
So we would carry over the $85,000.
The 64,500 comes out of fund balance this year, and then would carry over, as she says.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, this item is scheduled for a public hearing. And I should point out, in case it wasn't clear, that I believe part of our decision on which of these drafts to vote on involves whether or not we would do vote-by-mail or stick with the traditional voting at polling locations. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this issue?
Actually, just want to ask a question. Sorry. In open city hall, this, there was a topic about this. Have the responses from that been tallied? And have you guys looked at those responses?
Yes, we looked at them in work session today.
Sorry, I didn't watch work sessions. I apologize. Has it been a general that the public wants to do vote-by-mail more than voting?
Yeah, there were two different sets of, you could just look up there. This was the Provo Pulse survey that the mayor's office ran, I think, through Qualtrics. You can see that 57% of the 2,000 residents that they polled were strongly supportive, 29% were somewhat supportive. And then we did the open city hall. We had 175 visits, 45 registered responses, 88 unregistered responses. Go to the last slide, Bryce. If you look at the total responses at the very bottom bar charts, you'll see that approximately 60%, 59% seemed to be in favor of it. And then we circulated the comments with council. The comments were, were appropriate to whether you were in favor or opposed.
I was just wondering, because I figured this would take in counter decision.
Thank you.
Incidentally, counsel, when we looked at the 45 registered responses, they were split pretty evenly across the age groups, with the exception of the 60 to 70 range. But in every case, except for one, they were, they were in favor by more. There was one section where there was two respondents and they had 50/50.
60 to 70, where were they?
What's that?
60 to 70, where were they?
60 to 70, I think, was the ones, the one group that did not respond. We did have someone that was 79 years old that responded, and they were in favor of it. So. Incidentally, this is the best result that we've had so far with open city hall, so we're very thrilled with the, the participation.
If there are no further comments from the public, is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Then we'll, go ahead.
I think it's really good to have these responses in several different ways. I'm just remembering statistical classes I took when I was at BYU. If you have 120,000 population, you need 1,200 for a sample population. And we just fall way, way short of that. I'm not sure how we would get around that unless we had hired a company to come in and do a survey. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't know what the precedence is for this, and I don't know if it would make a difference at all, but.
Could you state your name, please?
Jeff Rose from Provo.
Thank you.
I don't know if it would make a difference or if it would change anything, but considering that, I don't know whether it's the very next item on the agenda is vote-by-mail.
It's this item, this item.
So approving vote-by-mail as well as the appropriation?
Yes.
Okay, then my question doesn't apply.
All right, thank you.
One other thought occurred. When you vote by mail, how do you compensate for voter fraud? You don't.
No, you, no, it's not that you don't. It's that the way the system is set up makes it difficult to have voter fraud because of the double verification system that happens with it. You have to, you, one of the, one of the key. You have to, one of the key features about it is that your ballot envelope is scanned in, it's set up to go to your name, you sign it, your signature is verified against your signature on your voting registration. If they don't match, you're contacted. Let's say you lost your ballot.
So, this is done with a scanner?
It's done with a scanner.
And it's an automatic process?
It is.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Can you explain the process? Can you keep explaining the process, but you're not willing?
Okay, we've had a request to finish up explaining the process, we'll take a few minutes to do that.
Sorry, a little harder hearing, but okay.
Did you want Janine to do that?
Let's have Janine do it, because she's the expert.
I know it's really confusing, but the process for a vote by mail is ballots are sent to every registered voter, every active registered voter in the city. And then, they're sent out twenty-one days before the election. The voters then have twenty-one days to mail in their ballot, or if they don't want to mail it in, they can drop it off at a drop box, either at the county or the city building, or on election day, there will be a voting center open for people, if they want to go in person, to drop off their ballot, or if they've lost it, or if the dog ate it, or something. So, they will have the ability to vote in person provisionally. So, with the vote by mail ballots, they have to be postmarked the day before the election. They are, they will go right directly to the county. The county then will collect them in batches, they'll scan the envelopes, compare the signatures, and then the envelopes will be placed again in batches of either twenty-five or fifty. At that time, the ballots, the envelopes are opened, the ballots are removed, they're placed separately, and from that point on, that envelope is separate from the ballot, so it's a completely secret ballot. It's not the ballot that identifies who voted. And then, the ballots are then scanned, and they can start scanning those ballots from the very first day that they start getting them. They don't run the report, but they can start doing the scanning. And on election day, after the polls close, the ballots and the provisional envelopes are taken from the vote center to the county, and then those that are the official ballots are counted, and the provisional ballots wait until the end of the, until just before the campus. So, let me see. I'm trying to think, is there anything else? George.
If you don't mail in your ballot, then you can go in and vote.
Absolutely.
And they'll know that you didn't mail it in, because they'll show that on the records.
Well, the problem is, is they won't know you didn't mail it in until after all of the vote by mail ballots have been counted. For instance, let me give you an example. Let's say I get a ballot in the mail, I vote it, and then I go to the polling, to the polling location on election day and say, I didn't get a ballot. Well, they'll still allow me to vote provisionally, but when they're counting the absentee ballots, they notice, they mark it that you have voted and they've received your vote by mail ballot. Then, if they turn around and have a provisional with that same name coming in, then that's where a possible fraud comes in.
So, when you vote in person, it doesn't get counted till later?
Yes, yeah, provisionally.
Second-class.
Pardon?
Second-class citizen.
Now, the other thing that's good, and I might bring this up, is, I don't know if you're aware of it, but I know Orem did this in 2015, and in Salt Lake County last year. When you vote by mail, at the current time, the legislation did not allow you to give out any numbers. They allowed you to give your preliminary numbers on election night, but after that, you couldn't release any more numbers until the canvass. With the vote by mail, you still have hundreds of ballots coming in during that two-week period. So, the legislature has passed legislation this year that allows the cities or the counties to update those numbers on a regular basis. Not necessarily every day, but maybe every two or three days, whenever they count ballots. So, that, because there are some races that might be pretty close, and to have to wait two weeks. So, this allows the cities to update those numbers.
So, I have a question. One of the major expenses is the postage.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm just wondering if there's a way, especially in a college town with people coming and going, a lot of transient population, how we can minimize the people on the rolls that are no longer really there, and then we may be sending out a ballot and wasting our time and money. So, I'd encourage, if there's not something being considered right now, looking at a process where we can kind of better weed out those people, and I'm just writing myself notes here, and, you know, if I didn't vote in two election cycles, and then I got a notice saying, we noticed you didn't vote in the last two election cycles, and we're not going to send you a ballot in the third one, you can come vote provisionally, we would save money.
Now, the state legislature, actually, the Voting, Utah Code Twenty A addresses that very thing. What they say is that a voter is considered active unless they have not voted in the last four elections, anytime in the last four elections. So, if you voted once in 2015, and that's the only time, you're still considered active. But after four years, if you haven't voted, then you're considered inactive. And then, at that point, the county sends out a postcard to that address, and that person can respond back. The problem is, is if they don't get that back, then the county has to wait an additional four years before they can actually take them off the register completely. So, it's a long process. That's why they limit sending the vote by mail to the active voters only, instead of the inactive.
That helps.
Yeah, definitely. In fact, I was gonna, I'll get to you, but I was gonna tell you, in 2013, our registered voters was sixty-two thousand. In 2015, we dropped down to forty-two thousand, and that's because they cleaned up that very thing. There were a lot of people that voted in a presidential election, and then never voted again, so.
Isn't that why our vote totals are so percentage low?
No, actually, our percentages are low, because we don't have very many people voting. Even at the sixty thousand, our percentage was fifteen thousand, I mean fifteen percent. I reduced it to say, okay, let's say there were forty-two thousand, then our percentage would have been about twenty-something percent for that year. But last year, in, well, in 2015, our primary was eight percent, and our general was fifteen.
But active is four years, right?
Pardon?
You said active voters are four years, so anyone that voted in the last presidential election that's moved is going to get a ballot.
Mm-hmm, that's correct. And if they voted in 2016 or 2014. No, 2014 wasn't a presidential election, but it was a general election, so. Did I answer your questions about the process? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, I, yes, I think we have not closed it yet, so go ahead.
I think that I wanted to ask and make a statement, I guess. Voting is such a privilege for all of us, and it's very sad that many people do not avail themselves of this privilege. However, I've worked the polls for a long time, and I've worked with Janine, and I do have a question regarding provisionals. When you are given a provisional vote, you are told you must take your verifying information down to the county within five days. If you do not do that, your vote does not count.
That's if you show your ID at the polling location, they can put that information on the back of the provisional ballot, and they don't have to. So, let me just explain that.
Okay.
And Catherine, Catherine is absolutely right. If you go to the polling location, you don't have your ballot, but you don't have any ID or anything, then yes, you have to go down to the county within five days to show that ID. If you go to the provisional, if you vote provisional and you have your ID, you have a driver's license, you have two forms of proof of where you live, they will mark that on the back of the provisional ballot, and you do not have to go down. But yes, Catherine's right, if you don't have any ID at all, then yes.
And then, my next question is, what do we do? The polling place that I work at generally is up at BYU in the conference center. And at this last of the election, which of course was a presidential one, we had an overwhelming amount of students turn out, and those students do not have the same address for four years. And that causes me to question, you know, the amount of envelopes arriving at these student housing places, and all of a sudden, well, you know, Cliff remembers that Johnny was here two, three years ago when the elections were, maybe he can now work with. I feel a little more reassured with the explanation that has been given, but I think that in a college town, this is a very interesting situation that we have here, and we need to safeguard the integrity of our voting system, so. But again, if we could encourage more people to actually come out and vote, I just think it's a great experience, and then you get your I-voted sticker, which reminds your neighbor to go vote, and everybody you come in contact with. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for discussion.
Well, the newspaper already announced my vote. I'm against vote by mail. I think we need to, if we're that interested, if we're interested in voting, we should go down to a polling place. And I'm really concerned, and we'll see how it works out. The long lines they had in Salt Lake County for people that wanted to vote at a polling place, they waited hours, so hopefully, we've worked that out, that there's enough polling places in Provo for we that want to vote at a polling place, we'll have a place to vote on a timely basis.
Thank you.
Mr. Connect.
So, we had a small survey, it wasn't twelve hundred, but we will have another survey, and that's when we all vote. And then, if there's a newspaper article the next day with horribly long lines and very unhappy people, then that's a survey.
I'm not worried about fraud, but I, maybe I'm just a little old-school like Mr. Stewart, but I do think there's value in the community gathering together and casting votes together. I think it's one of those last vestiges of civic engagement that we can do in person, and so, I am a little sad to see it going. I do think that that era is slipping away. I do think that vote by mail is the way that we'll be going in the future. I am a little sad to see that, though. One other thought, just to throw out there, this year, the city runs the election, but we can contract with the county. I believe next year, the county will be running, and while they have not stated that they'll be doing vote by mail, it seems that they're leaning towards that. So, one option would be just to hold off one more cycle, do a regular polling station vote this year. It probably won't cost, you know, the cost difference is pretty negligible. Let the county, on their own accord, push the vote by mail, and then, in two more years, we'll have that survey, as Mr. Connect pointed out, but it'll be the county making that decision, and then we can decide, you know, at that point, you know, once we've made, gone over to the vote by mail, I imagine, we won't go back, and so, in two years, it might just be a more smooth transition, if the county's taking the lead on it. But, I'm pretty resigned that we're going to vote by mail, and so, I won't be heartbroken if that's what we decide tonight.
Ms. Santiago.
I'm a fan of vote by mail, because I've done it for several years, and I like the flexibility that it gives. I like to be able to take my time. If there's something on there that I hadn't, that wasn't aware of, I can study it out, I can take my time and feel like I make a more informed decision. And I know, anecdotally, people that have also gone to vote, and, oh, I didn't know this was going to be on there, and they were unsure how to vote, and felt pressure because there's a line, and, you know, in trying to take the time to study something out. So, they either don't vote for it, or vote for it, and hope that it's good, and, you know, I just, I think that being able to take your time, really study something out, and make an informed decision is really the way to go, personally. And I have done both, where I've actually, I've either mailed my ballot, and then there are times when I took it down on election day and took it to my polling place, and I got my sticker, and I don't feel like I missed out, because I had both options available to me. I just had more time to look at the ballot, to make sure that I felt like I was making an informed decision on all of the issues, and the people, and judges, being able to look up the judge, you know, website on utah.gov, some of those things that, previous to vote by mail, would sometimes catch me off-guard at the polling place, personally, so. I'm in support of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Winderton.
It's the increased numbers that leans, makes me lean towards the vote by mail, it's just more people participating.
Well, I think we should vote online with our young college community, and especially after hearing the problem about keeping track of where the students are moving to, I think it would be great. Not an option this year, but I really hope that Provo would be a leader in moving in that direction as soon as it's been proven to be secure and practical. I think the cost would be much lower in the long run, and participation would be much higher, even than vote by mail. But, since that's not an option this year, I do favor the vote by mail. I think it's been proven throughout Utah to increase participation, and if you look at it on a per-vote basis, it actually lowers the cost per vote, even though the total cost is higher. Are there any further comments? If not, I think we have more than one option here, so we'll need, we don't have an implied motion here, we'll need a motion to specify which draft we're going to work from. Ms. Santiago.
I move that we approve the resolution appropriating sixty-four thousand five hundred for the vote by mail option.
Okay, and so, in this case, similar to the last one, this would be a motion to consider the vote by mail draft. Once that passes, then you'd have a separate motion for approval. Well, you'd have an implied motion for approval, once you've selected which version you're working from. So, this is, so the one that's currently on the screen is the one that's for the vote by mail option.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Santiago to select this as our working draft, or however you want to say that. Is there a second? Mr. Connect, seconded by Mr. Connect. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor? So, that is Mr. Winderton, Ms. Santiago, Mr. Connect, and Mr. Stewart in favor, all opposed. That's Mr. Harding, Mr. Van Buren, and Mr. Stewart. That's two for three votes tonight. I don't know. Anyway, so, this is now our working draft. Is there any discussion before we vote on whether to move ahead with this or not? You're not going to comment on this, Mayor?
I think I'm like George, you know how I feel.
I think we do. All right, thank you. All in favor?
Wait, wait, wait. We're voting on?
We are voting on the draft to institute vote by mail and appropriate the sixty-four thousand five hundred. We voted to select that as our working draft, as our implied motion, but we have not actually adopted. adopted. All right, seeing no questions or comments, then I'll call for a vote on the motion. All in favor? So that looks like everyone, except for Mr. Stewart, are any opposed? And Mr. Stewart is opposed. You're being consistent. So you can be both flexible and consistent, just, anyway, thank you. All right, I think that takes us to the last item, which is an ordinance amending the official neighborhood map, which will be presented by Mr. Strachan.
Okay. Can we bring up the maps? Council members and public, we have discussed this before. There were three neighborhoods, originally four, three neighborhoods that we discussed. We dropped the downtown one for more work on that. But there are two neighborhoods that we previously talked about, and a third one that we added. If you look at the maps, go to the top one first. The proposal is to move the area outlined in red above the yellow line from Lakeview, from the Lakeview North neighborhood, move it into the Lakeview South boundaries. Next one down. Similarly, with Sherwood Hills, we would take the building that's outlined between the red, in the triangle there with red on the hypotenuse, pull that from Sherwood Hills, move that, or remove that one into Edgemont. And then this last one, we've worked out with the neighborhood chair and the council member for that area, for the areas there, and to divide this new neighborhood to the right and put that in Provost and everything to the left of that line in Provost South. All these changes have been discussed with the neighborhood chairs for the area, and it's supported. And so the resolution that Bryce will pull up in a minute just references all these maps as Appendix A, and approving that ordinance will make those changes in the neighborhood program. And at some future point, we'll come back and talk to you about the downtown section and any other changes that we're looking at. Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Johnson?
I just want to make clear to avoid any confusion that, in this case, the, this particular ordinance that's on the screen right now was not the one that was uploaded into Sire. So to avoid any confusion, the one that is on the screen is the current version of the ordinance, and that is the one to which the implied motion applies, not the one that was uploaded in Sire.
And to further clarify, the difference between the two is the addition of that third?
No, it's...
And the one in Sire still talked about the downtown neighborhood.
Correct. It had the downtown neighborhood, and it was missing the Provost areas.
Okay, thank you. So the implied motion has all three of those changes that were just presented. Is there any, oh, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item before we bring it back? Do we bring the maps up?
I should note on the Provost South one, if you can pull that back up, Bryce, the boundary line changes, that yellow line from the left side to the right side gets changed by the red line.
And it goes as far south as right there. So it's just taking in any new development, only unbuilt areas right now?
Yes.
Other than what's pictured?
Yeah. Sat down with Richard Holmes, and at his request, the new units, some of which have been built, but a lot of them which have not been built, he wanted to retain in his neighborhood. And then as you get up onto the hillside, where you don't see any streets currently, that's Zone R110, and theoretically will be developed at some point. But the only access points are to the north off this map at the entrance to Slate Canyon. That's actually owned by Steve Turley.
Pamela, did you want to see the other ones?
Right, was there anyone from the public that wished to comment on this item? Three times tonight.
I know, you just, you love me, don't you? I just want to say thank you for taking consideration these changes so that the people feel more integrated in their neighborhoods. I know in my neighborhood, that street's just surrounded by open fields, and I think they associated more with people to the south than they did to the north. And so I thank you for taking this into consideration.
And thank you for your involvement in this item. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring this back to the council for discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on the implied motion to make these changes. All in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I believe that's it. And so if there's no objection, I will declare the meeting adjourned by unanimous consent.
Are we adjourning or going upstairs?
We are adjourning, but with a reminder that we have some unfinished closed-session business, and we would request that any council members who are available reconvene in the council conference room. Thank you.